I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, January the 6th, 2020. Want to welcome everyone. Don't really know why there's so many people here tonight. But I want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight. Who just sent me a text. Pastor Derek Porter of the Smyrna First United Methodist Church, who will come forward and give us our invocation and also lead us in the place of flag. So would everyone please rise?
Let us pray. Almighty and loving God, we thank you for your presence here tonight. We thank you for the grace that you have bestowed upon us, the love that you have poured into our community. Gracious God, we ask for that same grace to continue amongst us. Gracious God, help us to be people that honor and love and support and serve people of all walks, of all nationalities, of all faiths, of all sexual orientation, of all areas and parts of life. Gracious God, help us tonight to begin to celebrate our community and one another. Gracious God, we thank you for Mayor Bacon and his more than three decades of service to this community. Gracious God, be with him in this transition. Be with him in this change. Take the love that emanates from us and fill his heart as he moves into retirement. And gracious God, be with our men and women who are overseas and those who are preparing to go overseas as they provide the security that we take and that we celebrate. And gracious God, we know that you are a God of justice and love. And we ask not only for our current residents but for future residents. And gracious God, most importantly tonight, we ask for the future resident of Josh Donaldson to be here soon. Christ's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks that are not church scores or they would like to attend a nice church, Smyrna First Methodist at 1315 Concord Road, you can sign up a tithing card tonight and become a member. I'm just kidding. I went back to church a couple of months ago and the first thing Derek said was, "I was a little behind on my tithing." And I said, "Well, it's okay. I'll make it up." Agenda changes? We have none. Old business. A is the approval of the December 16th, 2019 mayor and council meeting minutes. If I can get a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item B on the agenda is approval of the December 12th, 2019 Committee of the Whole Minutes. Get a motion to approve those. Motion in a second. That's from the man upstairs. No, no, it's not. Let me cut this thing off. You'd think I was already on retirement. Did we get a vote on that? It's approved 7-0? Yep, approved 6-0. Who didn't vote? Andrew Med... Okay, let's approve 7-0. Okay. Before we get into the mayoral reports, here's the minutes. I'm not going to speak long. First thing I want to do is I want to turn in my keys. The gate to Public Works, the mayor's office, the community center, which I've had since 1991, front door City Hall, and the most famous one is the Unknown Key. I don't know what this is for, but I turned those in to Tammy. So I can't get in. And if you'll... I'd really like to keep this. If you'd swipe that or deactivate that. Where's Chris? Yeah, I'd just like to have this for a momento. I do want to acknowledge some people that are here. My family's here. My two sisters are here, Jenny Ruth and Linda. Would you stand up? There's... And is my brother David here? David's on the way. David's not going to show up. David's... He's not showing up. I have some children here. There's Ty here and Ashley. I have some grandchildren here. Does anybody think that they're my grandchildren? I do appreciate them. I have a... The mother of my children is here. Marsha Savage. Is Marsha here? She's in the back. That's one out of three, and that's great for me. I want to tell you how much I really love Marsha. I love her husband, Haywood. We were married at 19. Finally, after my third marriage, I figured out that it was a little difficult to be the wife of the mayor. But I appreciate you for being there with me, Marsha, for those early years and raising our children so much. And I still love you. I know it was difficult for you to leave me and take all the money and the things, the depression glass, the antique furniture. Every time... Listen, every year I'm invited over, Haywood and Marsha invite me over to eat. And every time I go over there, I see stuff, I say, "I remember this." But it was okay. She didn't get enough. Although she said that one time that she didn't get enough. I said, "Look, there wasn't anything left." So thank y'all for being here. My two best friends are here, Bobby Martin and Harry Coles. I want them to stand up. Harry helped Bobby up. They have been my friends since we went to kindergarten together. Forty years ago tonight, my father swore me in as mayor. And I hope I can get through this because it never was a plan for me to be in the office this long. I really got involved because I was upset with the Parks and Recreation and the fact that we didn't have any place to play softball. I know that sounds stupid, but that was in 1974. And I never had any idea of being mayor. I was pretty happy being just a city council member. I represented Ward Two, which is now Ward Six. And I was pretty happy just doing that. They were two-year terms, but I just want to say this. And I can't tell the people of Smyrna how much I really appreciate them having the most wonderful support. Of 12 elections, I was reelected, city council and mayor. And this is my hometown. I never wanted to live anyplace else. I'm just so lucky. Is that Steve Raisen? Has Steve Raisen come in? He's out of town? What about Diane? Okay, well, I had something for Steve. Anyway. I never really wanted to do anything other than just sort of serve my hometown. And I mean, I have lived a wonderful life. I mean, to be mayor of the town that I grew up in. I retired from the postal service with 40 years. I was postmaster. I could not have had a better life. I hope no Iranians are going to come up with a bomb and try to take me out because it would be terrible. But that was a joke. But our community has changed so much over the last 40 years. And I think we've done a good job with it, with adjusting to those changes. I see people out there that I have known for years. Scott Cochran's mother is here. Al Cochran's wife, who... They were our city attorneys that my dad appointed in 1975. And they have been our city attorneys ever since. And there's so many people here. I'm going to not recognize somebody tomorrow. I must say, man, I should have recognized them. I think the future is bright for the city. I think under the leadership of Derek Norton and the new council, I think they know the direction that we need to go. Times have changed in Smyrna. It's not like it used to be. So I'm happy to go out. This is amazing because I'm not going to cry. I don't think. I just want to thank those that... I do want to recognize those. My first term, Frank Johnson was the mayor. Jim Tollison represented Ward One. I represented Ward Two. Jerry Mills represented Ward Three. Jim Hawkins, Ward Four. Jack Chanel, Ward Five. Albert Coulson, Ward Six. And Johnny Steely, Ward Seven. A lot of those folks are gone now. But that was the first time that I was ever... I was on the council. And so, I mean, it's changed a lot. I mean, our budget has gone from $5 million to $92 million. So that's a lot. But here's what I want to say in my closing before I turn it over to Mayor-elect Derek Norton and the new council, is that I've just been so fortunate. I mean, I can't tell the citizens of Smyrna how much I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to serve you as your mayor and to lead this city in the direction that we have gone. And there's more changes to come. But I'm going to tell you, I have loved every minute of it. And that's a lie. I say I had, but there's been some tough times. But the first time I was out campaigning, I do remember this guy telling me, "Don't you ever forget where you came from. Don't you ever forget you coming to my house, knocking on my door and asking for my vote." He said, "Because if you do, you're going to lose. You will lose, and you will lose sight of what you're supposed to do." I'll just tell you this, that if you're up here for any other reason than to serve the public, then you're up here for the wrong reason. It's all about the people that are in the audience right now. That was a joke. But I do want to thank everybody. I know that there's a few members that are coming off. Andrea Bluestein, Marilyn Blackburn. You saying something? Yeah. Some things never change. Marilyn, Andrea, y'all want to say anything or are y'all ready to? Okay. At this time, we're going to ask that Mayor-elect Derek Norton come up and introduce the new mayor and council for the term of 2020 through 2024 and have Judge Anne Harris administer the oath.
Before you leave, I just want to say on behalf of everybody here, thank you for your service, your commitment, your sacrifice, your love for this community all these years. I want to say personally, thank you for all you've done for me, my family, Laura, and the kids, and I think the world of you. And we wish you the best in whatever's next for you, which will probably be an internationally renowned food critic on Facebook Live.
I ain't doing doodly squat.
We love you and best of luck in the future. And please, everybody, rise and give him a send-off that he deserves. All right, we can all be seated and I'll invite the new council members to come up and take their seats, please. I want to say thank you to everybody for being here this evening. This is the biggest crowd we've had for a city council meeting in quite some time. So appreciate everybody being here. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what we're going to do tonight. I'll introduce the new council. We'll all be sworn in. We do it a little bit differently here in Smyrna. Some cities have everybody get up together and raise their hand and do the oath and then ban their council members. But here, we do it individually. Everybody has the opportunity to come up with their families and be recognized. Everybody's worked very hard for the spot on this council, with the exception of Glenn and Tim, who didn't have any... And Corky, who didn't have any opposition. But we'll have bibles with their name and the date and do that individually and give them a moment to say something. And then we'll do our appointees and go through the rest of the agenda. So I'll introduce your council members for the next four years. Representing Ward One will be Glenn Pickens. Representing Ward Two is Austin Wagner. Representing Ward Three is Travis Lindley. Representing Ward Four is Corky Welch. Representing Ward Five is Susan Wilkinson. Representing Ward Six is Tim Gould. And representing Ward Seven is Louis Wheaton. Please give a hand for your incoming council members. With that, I'll invite Superior Court Judge Anne Harris up. She's going to be administering all of the oaths this evening. And did you want to say a few words? And I'll invite my family to come up while Judge Harris is making her remarks. Judge Harris is a Smyrna resident and we're so thankful that she's here to do this for us. Does a great job on the court and appreciate you being here this evening.
I'm just very honored to be a part of the proceedings tonight. You know, an elected official, you can never shut us up. But thank you for the opportunity to let me be part of, really, a history-making night. We've been in Smyrna permanently since 1995 and I'm just so encouraged. I see older folks out there. When I say older, that's like my age now. And younger folks. And the diversity in Smyrna is just a real encouragement. And, you know, we're going to miss Max, but I know Derek. I think we'll fill his shoes well. I hope Smyrna continues to be a city that seems to find ways to say yes instead of reasons to say no. I think that's just been evident in Smyrna's wonderful development over the last 25, 30 years, especially under Max. So thank you for letting me be part of this, Derek.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I'll go ahead and take my oath first and then I'll invite the other council members up. I want to introduce my family who's here.
And Sam wants to be held too.
This is my son, Jack, who just turned three yesterday. And my daughter Samantha, who was just shy of four months old the last time I did this, has been sworn in as a council member. Seems like it was yesterday. My wife, Laura. This is my mother, Shayna. Stepdad, Doug. My mother-in-law, Karen. And watching from Toddville, Iowa this evening is my father, Dave Norton, and my stepmom, Diane. And I know Tony Goss is also in Colorado watching this from afar. So we've got a nationwide audience for this evening. I'm going to put these guys down. And I want to say thank you to everybody who's out there, who helped. Y'all, I see so many faces in this crowd who I'm so thankful for, for everything that you did to help me get here. And I'm so humbled and honored to have this opportunity to serve this city. We have so much to look forward to and so much potential. And a lot of it is built on the foundation that Max put together for us here. So thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to look forward to serving you well.
Okay, if you will raise your right hand and... There you go, the other right hand. And repeat after me. I, Derek Norton...
I, Derek Norton...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will well and truly...
That I will well and truly...
Conduct myself as mayor...
Conduct myself as mayor...
Of the city of Smyrna...
Of the city of Smyrna...
For the ensuing term...
For the ensuing term...
That I will faithfully enforce the charter...
That I will faithfully enforce the charter...
And ordinances...
And ordinances...
Of the city of Smyrna to the best of my ability...
Of the city of Smyrna to the best of my ability...
Without fear or favor...
Without fear or favor...
That I am not the holder of any unaccounted public money...
That I am not the holder of any unaccounted public money...
Do the state...
Do the state...
Or any political subdivision...
Or any political subdivision...
Or authority thereof...
Or authority thereof...
And in all my actions as mayor...
And in all my actions as mayor...
Act as I believe for the best interests...
Act as I believe in the best interest...
Of the city of Smyrna...
Of the city of Smyrna...
So help me God...
So help me God.
Daddy needs to sign. Right here.
Next, I'll bring up Councilman Glenn Pickens. Glenn's been a constituent of mine for the last few years and has been very involved in the community. He's going to bring a fresh perspective, do a great job. And I'll invite you to bring up your family and say a few words.
While my family's coming up, I just wanted to thank them and all my friends and family out here for supporting me and encouraging me to run and just being here tonight and thanking all of you as well. And it's a great honor to be up here and to be able to represent Ward One on the council. And this is my wife, Emily. My dad, Glenn. My wife, I mean, my... My mom, Pam. Mother-in-law, Nancy. Father-in-law, John.
Well, do you want to have everybody stand up here? And is there a bible? Let's see, is it at the top? Glenn Pickens, there you go. Wonderful. All right, you know what? Why don't you turn and kind of face so everybody can see? If you'll just repeat after me. Is that your right hand? Yes. I, Glenn Pickens...
I, Glenn Pickens...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will well and truly...
That I will well and truly...
Conduct myself...
Conduct myself...
As council member of the city of Smyrna...
As council member of the city of Smyrna...
For the ensuing term...
For the ensuing term...
That I will faithfully enforce...
That I will faithfully enforce...
The charter and ordinances...
The charter and ordinances...
Of the city of Smyrna...
Of the city of Smyrna...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
Without fear or favor...
Without fear or favor...
That I am not the holder of any unaccounted...
That I'm not the holder of any unaccounted...
Public money...
Public money...
Do the state...
Do the state...
Or any political subdivision...
Or any political subdivision...
Or authority thereof...
Or authority thereof...
And in all my actions as council member...
And in all my actions as council member...
Act as I believe for the best interests...
Act as I believe in the best interest...
For the city of Smyrna...
For the city of Smyrna...
So help me God...
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call up Austin Wagner. Austin is a great addition to this council. He has experience in government and politics and he's got a law degree from Georgetown. So we're not sure what to do with him here. But I'll give you this bible and then have you introduce your family.
So as my wife and kids come up, I just want to say I'm just humbled and honored to be able to serve in this position. I hope that I'll be able to serve the city well. And thanks to everyone out there who I know came in and helped me and told the people about me. You know, I'm just excited to be able to get going. As my wife and kids come up, I've got my son, Vaden, who I hope is okay. I think we're okay. Lost a shoe. This is normal. And I've got my daughter Adelaide here. And then my wife Cynthia, who I just want to thank them so much. We spent many nights, you know, working all together on the campaign. And I would be remiss to say not have a huge thank you to my wife, who 10 years ago today is when we got engaged. So I can't think of a better bookend to this new chapter. So thank you, Cindy.
Well, I'm very honored to be here. Let's see, how would you like for them... However you would like for folks to stand. Do you want to hold it? There you go. All right, ready?
I'm ready.
All right, if you'll repeat after me. I, Austin Wagner...
I, Austin Wagner...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will well and truly conduct myself...
That I will well and truly conduct myself...
As council member of the city of Smyrna...
As council member of the city of Smyrna...
For the ensuing term...
For the ensuing term...
That I will faithfully enforce the charter...
That I will faithfully enforce the charter...
And ordinances...
And ordinances...
Of the city of Smyrna...
Of the city of Smyrna...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
Without fear or favor...
Without fear or favor...
That I am not the holder...
That I...
...of unaccounted public money...
That I am not the holder of any unaccounted public money...
Do the state...
Do the state...
Or any political subdivision...
Or any political subdivision...
Or authority thereof...
Or authority thereof...
And in all my actions as council member...
And in all my actions as council member...
Act as I believe...
Act as I believe...
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna...
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna...
So help me God...
So help me God.
They got some energy.
Think she stole the show.
She's his best campaign.
No doubt. All right, next I'm going to invite Ward Three, Representative Travis Lindley up. This is a particularly special one for me. I've known Travis for 20 years. I know he's going to do a great job. He grew up here in Smyrna and has a servant heart and loves this city. And I'll turn it over to you to introduce your family.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That has a great sound to it. I would like to introduce my family, my parents, Sam and Sarah Lindley. They... My dad is a second-generation Smyrna native. Arguably, I'm third, but we won't squabble over the numbers. My sister, Kristy, and her husband, Rob Allen. They live, I'm proud to say, in the heart of Ward Three. So very proud to be here. I want to thank all of my friends, friends, supporters and family that are here tonight. Without their efforts, this would not have happened. And I would say, know that I'm going to get up every day dedicated to making our community a better place and working for everybody, not only Ward Three, but for our city.
All right, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Travis Lindley...
I, Travis Lindley...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will well and truly conduct myself...
That I will well and truly conduct myself...
As council member of the city of Smyrna...
As council member of the city of Smyrna...
For the ensuing term...
For the ensuing term...
That I will faithfully enforce the charter...
That I will faithfully enforce the charter...
And ordinances of the city of Smyrna...
And the ordinances of the city of Smyrna...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
Without fear or favor...
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any public, unaccounted public money.
Do the state.
Do the state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions as council member.
And in all my actions as council member.
Act as I believe for the best interests.
Act as I believe in the best interest.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God. All right, next is Charles Corky Welch. I've had the pleasure of serving with him the last four years and has been on the council for eight years. This'll be his third term, so he's the co-dean of the council, I'd say. Appreciate your service, and I'll turn it over to you to introduce your family.
Thank you. With me this evening, I have my lovely bride Catherine Welch, my son Charles Welch, my daughter-in-law Katie Bowling Welch, and my grandson William Mason Welch. And he can do anything he wants to while this is going on. It'll be okay. I want to thank everybody for the last eight years, and I look forward to serving for another four years. It's been a great privilege to serve this city that I love, and I truly do love the city of Smyrna. I didn't grow up here like some of these people did. I'm a transplant, but I've been here almost 40 years now, and it has been an honor and a privilege to be able to live in this city and to serve the people for the last eight years. Hopefully, I can represent you well for another four, and then I'll walk off into retirement after this, but it has been, it's been a truly great term. With that, I'll turn it back over to Ann.
All right, if you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I Charles A. Welch.
I Charles A. Welch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
As council member of the city of Smyrna.
As council member of the city of Smyrna.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce.
That I will faithfully enforce.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Do the state.
Do the state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions.
And in all my actions.
As council member.
As council member.
Act as I believe.
Act as I believe.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, I want to call up Susan Wilkinson. She's the other longest-serving member of the council, having completed two terms and starting her third term. Got a servant's heart and works hard for the community, and I'll invite you, Susan, to come up and introduce your family.
Thank you, Mayor Norton. While my family's coming up, I'll say a few words as well, and I want to say what an honor and privilege it's been serving the citizens of Ward 5 and citizens of all of Smyrna for eight years. It's been an awesome experience, and also I look forward to serving another four years. I have lived in Smyrna a long time as well. I didn't grow up here, but I've been here 33 years, close to the amount of time Corky's been here. And I did grow up in the Atlanta area. I grew up on the south side of Atlanta, and I've always said, I felt like when I came here that it was like a south-side city on the north side, and so I've just fallen in love with Smyrna. And I look forward to serving for four more years. And I'll introduce my family. This is my husband, Doward Wilkinson, and these are my two daughters Alexis Wilkinson and Natalie Wilkinson, that are here with me tonight. And I also want to thank them for putting up with me while I do work really hard at this job. And I also want to thank all the citizens that helped me to be re-elected and how hard they worked. And I also really appreciate not having to run in the runoff, so anyway, with that, I guess I'm ready. Okay, thank you, Ann, and thank you too for being here.
Absolutely. Do you want to? Sure, absolutely. No, no, no. There we go. You can stand either way you want to. All right. I think I'd almost memorize this by now. If you'll repeat after, raise your right hand, left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. There you go.
This is kind of a little awkward. Step up just a little bit. Okay, there, thank you.
I Susan Wilkinson.
I Susan Wilkinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Conduct myself as council member.
Conduct myself as council member.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce.
That I will faithfully enforce.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Do the state.
Do the state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions as council member.
And in all my actions as council member.
Act as I believe.
Act as I believe.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next, I'll call up Councilman Tim Gould. If I mentioned earlier he didn't have opposition, I'll mention again, he did not have opposition. He won't ever let me forget it. But Tim has been a great addition to this council and always does a lot of homework and is thoughtful in his decisions and has really been a leader, particularly with the education effort, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really appreciate it. I've been on the council for about a year and a half, and it's really been one of the great experiences of my life. I'm very grateful for the chance to serve the residents of Smyrna, Ward 6, and I look forward to doing it for four more years. One of the great things about being on the council is you have a chance to speak to crowds, and people generally are interested in what you have to say, as opposed to at home, where my kids don't really care so much. So what they didn't know when I asked them to be here tonight was that they were going to come up in front of everybody, so if Abby and Jack and Judy can come up, if they're still here. Oh, there you are. So this is my wife Judy Fitzgerald, my daughter Abby, and my son Jack. And I want to thank them for supporting me and actually obviously bending their lives to accommodate the work of, or normal work, and then also city council work. So, thank you very much.
Left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. That's really tricky.
Everybody got that wrong.
All right, if you'll repeat after me. I Tim Gould.
I Tim Gould.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
As council member.
As council member.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce.
That I will faithfully enforce.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Do the state.
Do the state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions as council member.
And in all my actions as council member.
Act as I believe.
Act as I believe.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
For the best interests for the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, I'll call up Councilman Lewis Wheaton. Lewis has a little more seniority than the other new guys because he was sworn in when Ron Fennell resigned and when he moved away. And Lewis is a professor at Georgia Tech and brings the collective IQ of this group way up, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to expanding on my month and a half of experience in this position. You know, I really, we moved here 11 years ago and totally fell in love with this community. This is home for us, and I'm more than excited to serve Ward 7, serve the full city as well. Certainly want to thank everyone in Ward 7, regardless if you voted for me or not. I love the enthusiasm of our city. I love the enthusiasm of our community. So I'll invite my family up here, my two boys in order, Josh and Lewis Jr., and my wife Terry, and hi to everyone who's watching online in various parts of the country. And with that, well, come this way.
All right. If you will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, sir. I Lewis Wheaton.
I Lewis Wheaton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
As council member.
As council member.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce.
That I will faithfully enforce.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Do the state.
Do the state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions.
And in all my actions.
As council member.
As council member.
Act as I believe for the best interests.
Act as I believe for the best interests.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And Lewis. Oops. Should I just? Should I have a place for me? We can just pencil it in later, I think.
Now we're to the part of the agenda where we swear in mayor and council appointees. That includes city attorney, city administrator, city clerk, the judge for traffic court, judge for environmental court, and we have the same solicitor for traffic and environmental court. So I'll go ahead and begin. These are always appointed at the beginning of every term, and so I'll start with our city attorney Scott Cochran. And I recommend that we reappoint Scott. Scott's been serving the city now for 20 years. Is that right? You told me today, 20 years. Does a tremendous job keeping us out of trouble and guiding us, and we really appreciate everything that you do. I'm going to need a motion from council to reappoint Scott. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please vote. It's approved 8-0. I get a vote on these, by the way. It's approved 8-0. Scott, come on up.
Thanks, Derek. While my mother and wife make their way to the stage, I just introduced my mom, was here 20 years ago when I was first sworn in. I think my wife was too, actually. Yeah, she was. Yeah, it's our 30th year. I should remember that. So yeah, I can't believe it. I can't believe it's been 20 years. It's, like Mac said, it's all been fantastic at every second, and I'm lying here. No, it has been great. I love this city. Oh, how about, yeah, yeah. You want to hold the Bible? Yeah, just hold there.
All right, if you'll, left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. You got the drill down. If you'll just repeat after me. I Scott A. Cochran.
I Scott A. Cochran.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
As city attorney of the city of Smyrna.
As city attorney for the city of Smyrna.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce.
That I will faithfully enforce.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
That I'm not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Do the state.
Do the state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions.
And in all my actions.
As city attorney.
As city attorney.
Act as I believe.
Act as I believe.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, we have a reappointment of our city administrator, Tammy Sadler Jones. I'll need a motion and a second, please. Motion and a second. All in favor, please vote. It's approved 8-0. I'll invite Tammy Sadler Jones to come up. Tammy was our assistant city administrator for eight years and for a little over two years now, has been our city administrator. She does a great job for us, and I'm thrilled that I get to work with her in this capacity and that you're going to be our city administrator. She runs the day-to-day operations of the city.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Norton. Thank you to the council for reappointing me in this position. I would like to call up my family, my husband Lamar, our son Leland, and my mother-in-law Teresa Doyle, who is visiting from Saginaw, Michigan.
All right, if you will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and All right, if you will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Tammy Sadler Jones.
I Tammy Sadler Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Conduct myself.
Conduct myself.
As city administrator of the city of Smyrna.
As city administrator for the city of Smyrna.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce.
That I will faithfully enforce.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Do the state.
Do the state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions.
And in all my actions.
As city administrator.
As city administrator.
Act as I believe.
Act as I believe.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Leland just had that biggest smile, didn't he? All right, next on our agenda is swearing in of our new city clerk. This is Heather Corn and Heather worked for the city of Smyrna for three years as our deputy clerk. And then we lost her to Douglasville, but she's seen the light and she's coming back and we reeled her back in. So I need a motion in a second, please.
Motion to appoint Heather Corn as a new city clerk.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please vote. It's approved eight zero and I'll invite Heather to come up with her family.
Thank you. I am honored to be back at the city of Smyrna and to serve the citizens of the city and to work with Mayor Norton and our new council. And I'm very appreciative and I look forward to meeting each and every one of you. I'm so sorry. This is my mom Charlie and this is my husband John.
All right, who's going to hold the?
Who's going to hold?
Okay, I'm doing just fine. Thank you, sir. All right, left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. There you go. If you'll just repeat after me. I Heather Picken Corn.
I Heather Picken Corn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Conduct myself as city clerk.
Conduct myself as city clerk.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce.
That I will faithfully enforce.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Do the state.
Do the state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions as city clerk.
And in all my actions as city clerk.
Act as I believe.
Act as I believe.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
I'm so happy.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations to you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next I'll invite Judge Phyllis Gingrich Collins to come up. Judge Collins is a judge for our traffic court and I'm recommending reappointment. Need a motion in a second, please. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please vote. It's approved eight zero. Judge Collins has been our judge now for three, two, three years now. And daughter of former Congressman Phil Gingrich and does a great job. She's fair and runs our court very well. And so thrilled to reappoint her this evening. Judge.
I want to thank Mayor Bacon for appointing me in 2016 and Mayor Norton and council for giving me the opportunity to continue in this job that I love, for this city that I love. My family's here. I'm going to call them all up, but before that I want to recognize two special friends that are here with me to support me tonight, who are always here for me in the big milestones. Tricia Pridemore, your elected public service commissioner and my great gal pal. And one of my greatest friends Barry Morgan, who is the elected solicitor here in Cobb County for over 20 years now, I think closer to 25, actually. Who was my very first boss and actually presented me to the court when I first became a lawyer for my swearing in there. So, and also it's an honor and privilege for me to be sworn in by Ann Harris. If you don't know, she's the hardest working judge in Cobb County and it's an honor for me to be sworn in by her. So I'd like to introduce my family. Jerry Collins, my husband. We've been married 17 years. My daughter Lee, my daughter Rebi, my daughter Marion, my son Gray, my mother Billy Gingrich. And my father Phil Gingrich is watching from Washington DC. He couldn't be here tonight. But my uncle James Gingrich, who is also a lawyer and is always around for these special events and always very supportive. So thank you all for being here.
Okay, wonderful. Let's see, you know what?
This way?
About that and then you can get all your family kind of in there with you.
Everybody kind of circle around? Watch out for that there.
He'll be the manager.
There we go. Okay, you hold that. Can you hold that? Okay.
There you go. You can hold it close to your mom. We've got the dress memo.
Okay, yes.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I Phyllis Gingrich Collins.
I Phyllis Gingrich Collins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Conduct myself.
Conduct myself.
As municipal court judge.
As municipal court judge.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce.
That I will faithfully enforce.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
That I'm not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Do the state.
Do the state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions.
And in all my actions.
As municipal court judge.
As municipal court judge.
Act as I believe for the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
Act in the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Phyllis. Oh, Phyllis.
Yep.
Next I'll call up our judge for environmental court, Judge Joel Pugh, who's been our judge now for. Over 12 years, okay. Does a fantastic job and we appreciate everything that you do. Your Bible was the last one to arrive. It got here at about five o'clock. You know what? I gotta, I gotta have a motion in a second first. First things first. Okay, have a motion in a second. All in favor, please vote. Thought you were just going to skate right in there, didn't you? It's approved eight zero.
I'm honored to have this position. I want to thank the mayor and city council. I've enjoyed it thoroughly. I think this is my fourth, be my fourth time being sworn in with my wife of 27 years, Ellen. We married at a very young, she was very young when we married. My very dear friend Barry Morgan also is in the audience and Judge Harris, I have the, this is the second time you've sworn me in, but we were trial partners a long time ago in the district attorney's office. So thank you again. I'm very privileged to serve.
There we go. Look, this is good. You can face everybody. There you go. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I Joel C. Pugh.
I Joel C. Pugh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Conduct myself.
Conduct myself.
As municipal environmental court judge.
As municipal environmental court judge.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce.
That I will faithfully enforce.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Do the state.
Do the state.
Or any political subdivision or authority.
Or any political subdivision or authority.
And in all my actions.
And in all my actions.
As municipal environmental court judge.
As municipal environmental court judge.
Act as I believe.
Act as I believe.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next I'll call up Tim Williams and I'm going to get a vote this time first. This is our reappointment of our solicitor for traffic and environmental court, Tim Williams. May I have a motion in a second, please? Okay, have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. Come on up. I first met Tim and Ellen when Laura and I were sponsoring the Campbell Fast Pitch softball and got to know them and two of my favorite people. So I'm thrilled that you're going to be reappointed this evening.
Thank you. It's just an honor to be here. Think I've served about eight years and just a quick story, I know him last, so I don't want to, Laura's hesitant to talk too much, but I want to thank, I want to thank Max Bacon for giving me a great opportunity to serve this city. And I agree with everybody that's been up here, this is a wonderful city. I have a luxury of actually being asked sometimes, which is a compliment to go to other cities, even though I like other cities, I won't name names, but this is a wonderful place to live, to work, to raise your family. I look out here and I can name all kinds of people that have helped me. I remember Judge Finch, who serves in our state court, was our first environmental solicitor. Environmental is just our ordinances and I remember the mayor asking, when we had some turnover, could you, could you serve and maybe do both courts? And I've, it's just been a privilege to do it and I remember telling the mayor, I think I can handle it. I love this city. I love to serve this city. So I think I can do the traffic and the ordinances and it's just been a wonderful experience. I'd like to introduce my wife Ellen. She's, she's been a great supporter of mine. I wish my daughter Mary was here. She wanted to be here. Unfortunately, Georgia started class back. I said, go back and study. It's a privilege to be up here with Judge Harris. As a city prosecutor, this, this was assistant district attorney. I still get a little bit nervous being up here because I've actually been on the other side and she's a very good lawyer. So this is a, this is a great privilege. I know some of the other lawyers don't know what I'm talking about. But I'd also really like to thank the judges I work with, Judge Collins. It's been a privilege. They are diligent. They're respectful. It's made me a better lawyer, a better person. Our court has to be fair and our court system for this city, we represent the council people that are here. It's a little different because we still have to administer justice, but we need to do it fairly. And regardless of your creed, your color, who you know, you have to be fair to the people, particularly when you live in a city like this, because you know, sometimes I see people and I want to know that they were treated fairly by their court and their court system. I want to thank Judge Pugh and I know she doesn't want me to thank her, but Judge Pugh, I think, was asked about his, the time he served. He said, where's Cardi? Cardi is our city clerk. She's there and yes, I'm going to thank you because it's the people that you work with behind the scenes. Believe me, I get the easy job of being the solicitor and the lawyer. She has really helped me tremendously and I thank you. She's been here a long time and sometimes I think she knows more than me and maybe she should go to law school. So thank you so much. I appreciate you. Thank you.
All right. Left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. There you go. Here's tall as my husband. If you'll repeat after me. I Timothy M. Williams.
I Timothy M. Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
Will well and truly conduct myself.
As city solicitor.
As city solicitor.
For municipal and environmental courts.
For municipal and environmental courts.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce.
That I will faithfully enforce.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
That I'm not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Do the state.
Do the state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions.
And in all my actions.
As city solicitor.
As city solicitor.
Act as I believe.
Act as I believe.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
For the best interests of the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
I want to thank, congratulations, Mayor.
Judge Harris says she's out of Bible, so that must be it.
And to all the city officials and public officials here, thank you for letting me be just a small part of this. It's been an honor and a privilege for me. So with that, Mr. Mayor.
Let's give a round of applause to Judge Harris. Also, these appointees serve at the pleasure of mayor and council, but they're the best in the business and they really serve our community well. Let's give them a round of applause as well. I saw Tom Aderhold come in. Hello, Tom. How are you? Thanks for being here this evening. We'll go to the next gen item is five land issues, zoning annexations. We have none. Item six is privileged license. We have none. Item seven, formal business. We have several appointments and reappointments to various city boards and committees. The first one is my appointment. It's item seven A 2020-10, appointment of the mayor pro tem. And the mayor pro tem is a member of council who is, when I'm not there, whether I'm sick or traveling, will run meetings or appear at public functions and that type of thing. And I'm going to recommend Tim Gould for mayor pro tem. Like a motion in a second, please.
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Congratulations, Tim. Now I have to take a point of personal privilege here. Is my daughter Samantha in the audience? She is. I see her back there. My daughter made me this beautiful tie over Christmas and she was so excited to give it to me and she said, would you please wear it in your first meeting as mayor? And so I told her I would and so I am going to put this on and say, thank you so much Samantha for making this for me. All right. We'll move on to item seven B 2020-14, approval of Ward Three, appointment to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, Betty Williams. This is a two-year term that will expire December 2021. I'll turn that over to council member Lindley.
Motion to approve is previously read by the mayor.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. You might have guessed this is going a little quicker than the other, the other part. Item seven C 2020-15, approval of Ward One, reappointment to the Parks and Rec Commission, Nicholas Bergeron. This is a two-year term to expire December 2021. Turn it over to Councilman Pickens.
Motion to approve, the motion is previously read by the mayor.
Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item seven D 2020-16, approval of Ward Three, appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Leigh Anne Reichoff. This is a two-year term to expire December 2021 and I'll turn it back over to council member Lindley.
Thank you, sir. Leigh Anne is here with us this evening. I'm proud to nominate her to that appointment. And motion to approve is previously read by the mayor.
Do we have a second? Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item seven E 2020-17, approval of Ward Seven, reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Jay Barrett Carter. This is a two-year term to expire December 2021. I'll turn it over to council member Wheaton.
Happy to approve for the reappointment of a really good neighbor and resident of our city, Jay Barrett Carter for this position. So motion to approve is previously read.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion in a second. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item seven F 2020- Item 7F 2020-18, approval of Ward one, reappointment at the Planning and Zoning Board, Tom Bartlett, this is a two-year term to expire December 2021, I'll turn it over to council member Pickens.
Motion to approve, the motion is previously read by the mayor.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero. Item 7G 2020-19, approval of Ward three appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, Keith Bentley, this is a two-year term to expire December 2021, council member Lindley.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bentley is here this evening, longtime friend and leader in our community, rotating off as an appointee for Parks and Recreation, so proud to nominate him to Planning and Zoning, motion to approve and is previously read by the mayor.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero. Samantha, I really do like this tie a lot. Item 7H 2020-20, approval of Ward seven, appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, Henrietta Austra- Austra- Astra? That's a tough one Louis, this is a two-year term to expire December 2021, Louis?
Henrietta's here this evening with us, happy to nominate her to Planning and Zoning, and move to approve is read.
Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please vote.
Tie looks better than the one you had on before.
All right, item 7I 2020-21, approval of Ward seven, appointment to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, Tripty Gajade, this is a two-year term to expire December 2021, council member Wheaton.
Motion to approve is read.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Item 7J 2020-25, approval of Ward two, appointment to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board, Lisa Castleberry, this is a two-year term to expire December 2021, council member Wagner.
Move to approve as previously read by the mayor.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Item 7K 2020-26, approval of Ward two, appointment to the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission, Rebecca Skillion, this is a two-year term to expire December 2021, council member Wagner.
Move to approve as previously read by the mayor.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please vote. Approved seven-zero. Seven, let's see, this is item 7L 2020-27, approval of Ward two, appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, Victor Jones, this is a two-year term to expire December 2021, council member Wagner.
Move to approve as previously read by the mayor.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please vote. You okay over there? Approved seven-zero. Item eight is commercial building permits, we have none, item nine is the consent agenda, Ms. Sadler Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows, item A, approval to accept and continue enactment of all current contracts for enforcement by the 2020 through 2024 elected and appointed officials, item B, approval of an increase of the monthly stormwater charge from $2.95 to $3.45, as was adopted in accordance with the fiscal year 2020 budget, and item C, approval to use council chambers for Concord Lake Village HOA meeting, Sunday, February 23rd, 2020, from 4:00 PM, 4:30 PM to 6:00 PM.
I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is read by the city manager.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven-zero. Next item is item 10, committee reports, committees really haven't been assigned yet, but we'll go wards one through seven, we'll begin tonight with councilman Pickens.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report at this time, but thank you all for being here tonight.
Council member Wagner.
I just want to say thanks again to everyone for your support, and excited to serve the city.
Council member Lindley.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, no official report this evening, I echo my colleagues, thank you all for being here and being part of the process.
Council member Welch.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna be very brief, but I certainly don't wanna leave this meeting without acknowledging how much I have enjoyed serving with Mayor Max Bacon over the last eight years, and I know that the city is, has been well-served by Max for 40 years now, and I have certainly enjoyed my time with him, with that I yield.
Council member Wilkinson.
I'd also like to say it's been an honor to serve with Max Bacon, and it's been an awesome experience, and I'm looking forward to serving the citizens of Ward five, and I wanna thank them again for re-electing me, it's a privilege, and with that I yield.
Mayor Pro Tem, Tim Gould.
Thank you Mr. Mayor, likewise, it was a pleasure to work with Mayor Bacon for the short time, and learned a great deal from him, and I thank him for his service to the city, and Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank you for your confidence in me, as asking me to be mayor pro tem, I greatly appreciate that, and I thank you all for being here today, thank you.
Council member Wheaton.
Yeah, I wanna, you know, echo a lot of the comments that were made before, it was tremendous to serve with Max for the brief period of time I was able to, but he's definitely a good guy to get to know, and good to see in our various meetings, I look forward to working with all of you, you know, today and moving forward, and happy new year to everyone, I know everyone's kinda getting back into their routines of life, so have a healthy and prosperous new year.
Sadler Jones?
It's been a pleasure also working with Mayor Bacon for the last 10 years, and I look forward to working with Mayor Norton and this council, and I think we're gonna do some great things these next four years, thank you very much.
I'll say the same that the others have said, it's been great working with Max and adventure always, a lot of times you never knew what was gonna happen, but it has been fantastic, I'm looking forward to this next term, we have a fantastic team here, there's a lot on the agenda, there's a whole lot going on in the city, I'm happy to be a part of it.
It's Tina? All right, item 11 is show cause hearings, we have none, item 12 is citizen input, has anybody signed up for, nobody signed up for citizen input? I'll just say thank you again to everybody for being here this evening, I really appreciate you taking the time, thank you to all those who serve, both on the council, on appointed positions, and citizen boards and commissions, thank you for all the time you put in, looking forward to a lot of great things, and appreciate the opportunity to serve, very humbly. With that, I'll call this meeting adjourned at 8:17.